Uh, the hour having arrived, I'm going to uh welcome everyone to the town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday. May twenty eighth. Reminder that the meeting is being recorded, it will be available on the town's website uh within a few days. And start with roll call Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Greg Demerjen.
Here.
Percy Brown.
Here.
Uh, my name's Tom Lucy, obviously I'm here. Uh, one of our members Dave Hatfield will not be here. Uh, we have a new associate member Mitt who I do not see Mitt, am I missing you? I will note that he is not available as of right now either. Uh, but Dave, we know will not be joining us uh. For the meeting. Going to ask uh Joe Pride, who's the uh. The clerk of the board to please read the legal notes.
Sure thing, Mr. Chair, consistent with the governor's orders extended. Certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you don't have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the follow. Dial in number one, three, zero, one, seven, one, five, eight, five, nine, two, meeting ID, eight, four, seven, seven, four, seven, six, nine, zero, seven, six, passcode. Six, two, six, five, two, seven, please only use dial in our computer and not both as audio feedback will to start the meeting, this meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities, Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or. Language assistance free of charge. Upon request, if you are a person with a disability and require information. Or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Town Engineer at. Seven, eight, one, two, four, six. Six, three, zero, eight, as far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant. Your requests, advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove inaccessibility. Barrier for you. One continued hearings, two, twenty-five dash forty-two Eastern Bank, application for a variance under article. Uh, thirteen. Section one ninety dash seventy-seven dash D two and E one A of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to furnish. Install one wall sign. The property is shown as map. Thirty-six W lot parcels. Thirty-six dash zero, four, six of the assessors map and is located at six oh, one Edgewater Drive, three, twenty-five dash forty-three. Wakefield Living LLC, application for a modification of two special permits and a variance granted by the Board of Appeals filed. With the Wakefield Town Clerk on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And recorded the middle six self. Registry of deeds at book seven, nine, five, zero, one, pages three, thirteen, three, twenty-five and three, thirty-seven. Which currently allow a restaurant use in combination with a fifty-eight. Unit mid-family mid-rise apartment building to allow for either restaurant use. Or professional and business offices. Uses in combination with said fifty-eight unit multi-family mid-rise apartment building, the property is shown as map thirteen lot parcel. One oh, four, A plus of the assessors map and is located at sixty-two Foundry Street, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, first on the agenda for tonight is a case for thirty-five Starkav. Having a uh, a letter from attorney Brian McGrail dated today. Um. Please continue the matter until the meeting on June twenty-fifth, as we are finalizing work with the building inspector. To address matters stated in his letter and I anticipate it will result. In a request to withdraw my client's appeal. At that time. We're looking for a uh motion to uh continue that matter to our June twenty-fifth hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Chairman, I move that we can, you're doing it, Joe?
No, go ahead, Jim.
Mister Chairman, I move that we uh. Continue this hearing to our June twenty-fifth hearing.
Second half.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing seeing none. Uh, regular voting members and Greg, Chip?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Uh, Kasumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes, that matter is continued. Next up is uh cases twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-two. L N L Development, uh, one fifty-four Salem Street, one fifty-eight Salem Street. Uh, Mister McGrail, I thought I saw you on the line.
I'm here, I'm here, Mister Chair.
Okay. Floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mister Chair, for the record attorney Brian McGrail representing. Uh, the applicants, uh, L N L Development LLC in Wakefield Salem Street LLC, one fifty-four and one fifty-eight Salem Street. Again, uh, Nick Leo is with me tonight, who was um representing both entities. Um, also with me tonight is uh Bill Fleming, um, who is from William Fleming and Associates, he has our landscape architect for the project. And Nurgis uh Brunelis, who is our architect, he's with KDI. And what we had discussed, uh, as you're aware. Uh, from the last meeting, we are in the process of doing some revisions, um. Adjustments to the site, uh, plan for drainage uh matters and that is in the works. Um, and we'll keep you informed in that regard. Uh, but what was discussed at the last meeting is uh that this meeting would be for the sole purpose of focusing on. Um, landscape landscaping and um architectural. So, um. If I may, Mister Chair, I'd like to start with the landscaping aspect of it. Um, and um hand it over to uh Mister Fleming to make a presentation in that regard. Um, I will remind the board that we're proposing, you know, your board's focus and jurisdiction. Is on lot three in the back, but we're proposing significant landscaping on the entire site, which involves. Um, the two family and single-family dwelling lots that Bill will get into a little bit. And that that would be under the jurisdiction of of the planning board and they're aware of this, we submitted the the uh. Landscape components to them as well. Um, and I will say to set the table, as I briefly discussed at your last meeting. Uh, what Bill is proposing on the site i- in totality, when I say the site, the whole subdivision and um the um. Attached dwelling complex lot three is four hundred and forty-five plantings in total. So with that said, if I may uh hand it over to Mister Fleming and and may I share my screen, Mister Chair to help him out?
Please do, but a- as you're doing, I just want to note that um the associate member Mitt Patel has joined uh the meeting for the record. Okay, Mister McGrail, go ahead.
Yep, I'm gonna. Bill, you there, can you just?
Yep. Uh, for the record, I'm William Fleming from William Fleming Associates. With a landscape architecture team for the project. And um, the overall landscape design concept is to create a landscape that is visually appealing. To the future residents of the site while blending into the existing site context and environment. Uh, the approach is to create. Uh, this design started with the native New England landscape into the site that utilizes flowering ornamental trees. With native shrubs and perennials. That have attractive massing of textures greeting and leading the residents into and out of the site. While providing a buffer to the butters across the street. Along with a four-foot-high. Picket fence that'll have plantings on b- both sides that you see on uh native uh on New England-lined streets. And that that entrance is along Salem Street leading you into the site. Um, the selected shrubs in that area that are planted near the entrance have sightlines that have mature heights of no more than three feet tall, which is below the eye level of the vehicular drivers coming into and out of the site. Um, for areas proposed uh streets uh for the street trees intent of the landscape plan is to create a formal landscape tree-lined. Edge. With native shade trees that leads the residents to the vehicular pedestrian entrances. Into and out of uh the site. Along the perimeter edge, uh, we have drifts of evergreen and deciduous trees to soften the residences along the property line. Along with some instances of a six-foot-high. Privacy fence. On the east and western um. Property lines where there's um a butters uh that will have visual. Uh. Sites. Um, the plant uh. Buffer along and the plant material directs uh for circulation sizable shade trees and ornamental trees. Along the ro- roadway will have six-foot-high branching, we're located. Uh, to provide summer shade, um, so that we minimize. Uh, the heat island effect with these proposed street trees. Uh, we've minimized uh lawn grass used sparingly along backs of curbs where space allows for softer. Uh, maintainable area. And edge for future snow management. Uh, the planting philosophy for the overall site is based on the right plant. Uh, for the right location. Uh, all the plant material we're using for the site is native. Um. We've used this uh plant material has been selected for the site too, uh, for its form suburban debil- uh. Durability, hardiness and test of performance in this kind of in. Uh, proposed environment. We're proposing thirty-one total new evergreen trees. Uh, sixty-one deciduous and ornamental trees. Uh, and then a hundred and sixty or so deciduous and evergreen plantings that are all uh native to the area. Um, so. With that being said, uh, I can either. Answer any questions that either the committee has or town members have. Or I don't know how you guys want to do it, or answer that at the end of the. Um. Um.
Uh, we're we're all set, I think what we're gonna do is stop here and this is for members of the board, public comment will be later and. In the this portion of the hearing tonight. So board members, uh, as it relates to the landscape plan that's been presented, comments or questions?
If I can just add, Mister Chair, real quick, just to tag off that we didn't forget something that we talked at the last meeting, we've talked to the planning board about it as well. That Bill's working on a uh tree protection plan for the for the perimeter trees to make sure that uh they're protected during construction. Uh, and not just abused by the contractors, we've done that before and that will be an additional submittal coming in the future.
Okay.
And Brian, to that point, when when will those trees? Be selected, viewed and determined?
Wait, the the site itself, Chip, the whole site where the development's gonna take is gonna pretty much be clear-cut, it has to be. But.
Okay.
On the perimeters, which is is marked on the plan. Um, you know, there's kind of like a no disturbance area, that is gonna be the area with with protection will be implemented on the perimeter of our development site, if you will. So we'll delineate that clearly uh on the tree protection plan.
All right. Bill, I noticed um. That you have, if I read it right. First of all, I I. When we first met and talked, and I don't know that you were on board. We were told that the. I'll call them the islands or the entrances. We're not gonna be able to have trees. Because of the depth and need. For. Um. Drainage. And for all the drainage that had to go in there, now I see trees are there. Um, what's changed?
This is in this area, Bill, right, Chip, just so he knows.
Yeah, so I mean, tho- those are like more si- like ornamental-sized um trees, they're not really say say. So-called street trees. Um, like we're having proposed. Everywhere else, uh, those are proposed, they're called um. Little king river birch trees and the root balls on those were basically. Kind of skirting where Rick is having all his proposed utilities go through there. And being able to at least get something. Within that space that has some sort of vertical height to it. Uh, we couldn't really put in a. A so-called street tree like uh what we're proposing, like a red maple or anything like that, just because it will just. Take up too much space with the uti- all the utilities. Uh, going through there, the uh, the little king is basically. Once it matures, it's basically, it's size restricted, it will never, and it's not like a um. What you see at other ri- river birch trees that get to about thirty or. Forty feet tall, these get to about mature height of like ten to, I think it's like ten to twelve feet tall, max. I forget what, uh, let me see what we're proposing. Installed.
So are they multi-stem or singular stem?
Uh, those I believe are going to be single-stem. Uh, again, we're trying to just get something in vertical. Uh, in that space. Uh, and a small root bill.
It's spec eight to ten feet and it says three uh stem-type.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So. What does it say, Brian, eight to ten feet and?
Yeah, spec in chip on the uh, on the, on the plan.
I was looking at that, yeah.
Yeah, eight to ten feet and then it says remarks.
Yeah, three.
Three stem-type.
So it's not, so it's not singular stem, it's tight stem, yeah, okay. And are these as dirty as normal river birches?
No, not at all, well, no, they keep their kind of, to me, their um. Tightness. Uh, unlike the river birch that kind of gets gnarly uh. Later on in its maturity, so. Again, these ones that we're proposing are kind of almost uh toward, let me get them. Towards its um. Maturity anyways, uh, hold on. Yeah, so those are, so we, what was it, eight to ten we're proposing, so. That's about two-thirds of the way it's gonna get there, then it's about fifteen feet tall is its max, so. And again, where it's where it's positioned and everything else like that, it will ta- it it will uh. Take its time growing to its maturity, just because of the environment it it's in.
And how are these taller, are are these tolerant to salt?
Yep, very tolerant, I mean, uh, everything in those kind of end caps and then kind of anything that I've got a lot located. Near any kind of roadway is. Uh, drought tolerant, salt tolerant, um, you know, again. Uh, you know, with all all landscaping, it's, you know, when it's. Installed, uh, people just need to be on it with water, I'm sure. Whomever the landscape team is putting this in will be on top of that the entire time, so.
Yeah, well, they'll all be irrigated, so that's not gonna be difficult.
Correct.
Uh. Okay, and where, so those are all in in front of the houses. Or condos. Where else do you have and what do you have? For. Ornamentals back in this area, trees?
Um, so what, in the back of those units there, uh, I've got dogwoods, native dogwoods. And then I believe I got a couple of screen uh evergreen trees on the backside. There. Some spruce. Um, and yeah. River birch, I mean, I mean dogwood. And then uh for the street.
Bella dogwood, two and a half to three-inch caliper, single.
And for the street trees a lot i- in the development on the roadway, it's honey locusts. And then on the front, and then some of them are red maple along that kind of entry into the. Um. Different units.
I mean, at this point, I'm fine with it.
Good. Joe, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Mister Chair, so. Um, I agree with Chip, I I like the the layout, I'm just, I don't know, you mentioned snow storage, I'm a little concerned, if is there enough snow storage? Um. I feel like in the 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 top, the the front section, as you leave the street, or you come into the property. I think you have enough, but then I feel like you get, after you. Go through that circle area and then you go into the area with the one, two, three, seven condos. What's that, eight condos? You start to lack, I feel like the the. The shrubbery on the right-hand side down that roadway. May get beat up with the snow and that kind of leads me to my second question, Brian, do we have enough sidewalk? I feel like the sidewalks just drop off. In the first section, I don't I don't know if it. If it's mandatory by towns or safety to bring sidewalk. I hate to lose plantings, but. You, if you're, if you're trying to walk, if you have kids, you you almost have to walk in the middle of the street. To get to those eight houses back there, or condos rather.
We, so just to address those first, so on the snow, we acknowledge in our operation and maintenance plan, we'll call for when, we've got some snow storage in certain areas over here. Uh, but, you know, not enough, so. You know, depending on the snow level, which we haven't had, you know, in in, you know, for a while in this area, but you know, you gotta plan on the fact that you could have a bad winter. So that there'll be an O and M plan like there are in many of these projects that will require removal of the snow. The 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 streetway we went over with the planning board is just gonna be plowed like any street coming in, this is, this is gonna be set up to be. This is, this is gonna be set up to be accepted as a public way, this cul-de-sac. Um, yeah, so now as far as the sidewalks go, Joe, we talked about the planning board with this, this is a sidewalk here. So anyone, you know, the sidewalk you access for everyone, so if someone wants to come out of this project. They can, they can just walk out the drive and hop right on the sidewalk and go all the way down to Salem. And then this house has sidewalk also.
Yeah, I s- I see all that, so I just feel like tho- those last eight houses, you kind of, if you're in the. If you're in unit five, you gotta walk in the street. All the way down, you know, up to unit one and then kind of hover the, I don't, you know, is.
Were you talking about, you you looking at this as a street?
Yeah, in a way.
It's really, it's really a driveway only serving eight units, so there's really not gonna be a lot of, a lot of.
No, I get it, I mean, it's a dead end, it's not, it's not gonna be a, a, you know, I don't know, I didn't know if it was a safety, I mean, if the planning board was fine with it, then I, I guess, but just.
Well, the planning board, with all due respect, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say they're fine with it, because they they seem fine with what's happening out in the street, but this inside here is your jurisdiction, not theirs. So.
Yeah.
I don't want, I don't want to make an inadvertent representation that they're, you know, they're not, they're not looking at this lot three site, that's, that's your jurisdiction.
Okay, yeah, I just, I don't know, I don't know if anyone else feels differently, I just. I get it. It's not a street. But with all those houses, I mean, you know, there's there's eight units there, that's, I mean, that's, you know, it's not gonna be a lot of cars coming through, but. I don't know, just if you get kids, they gotta walk in the street at wo- at one point, just to get from. Unit, you know. Five, five, six, seven and eight, they they're walking in the street, but it's not a lot, I'm, you know, I guess, I don't know, just that's, just an observation I found, that's all.
All right, what's that distance in that driveway?
Oh, God, I don't have rich here, um. Nick, do you have any idea?
These buildings about thirty feet wide, so I'd say. Maybe a hundred fifty to two hundred feet. Somewhere around there from the street to the back of unit five.
Now, I'm more concerned that as Joe's saying. What what what's the distance from the the sidewalk at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Right here.
Up into the. That point right there up. Until you get to the units, so like back here, Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, about a hundred feet.
Probably a little less.
Yeah.
Right around there, though.
I kind of see Joe's point, that's all.
Does it make set, does it make sense to along unit one, I mean, I hate, like, again, I hate to get rid of plantings, but to to make that strip a sidewalk. I I don't know. You know? And then keep the plantings on the opposite side. Um, opposite unit one, the the longer section there. Just, you know. Maybe, like, yeah, like you were saying, Tom, connect that cul-de-sac and then down. Parallel to unit one, and then at lea- I mean, it gives you a little bit. More walking space, but.
I think right now that plantings maybe three feet, I don't know, Bill, can you scale that?
That around three feet.
Unit one?
Yeah.
So we'll say. Back a curb to the building is four feet.
Four feet. I mean, that that would be the best spot, I guess, if that's something the board desired.
Well, we're certainly gonna ask you to take a look at it and uh see if maybe there's a mid-middle ground too, where you can keep some plantings, but provide a walkway as well. Um, so if you could, if you could look at that.
Yeah, and we we hear the concern, we respect it, we we don't have an answer for it tonight, obviously, so we we get a note of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else, board members? Hearing none, that's it, Brian, but I do want to again echo Joe's comments on snow removal and the O and M plan, we're gonna have to see. Um. Some language. That if there's, you know. Some s- a certain amount of snowfall, we're gonna want to see it hauled off the site.
Mm-hmm.
Tom, Tom, real quick, to your point with that. This, this whole development will be. I'm assuming. Contracted to like one landscape company where they will take care of all landscaping from. From Salem Street all the way back to unit five, it'd be, I know, basically one contract, so, I mean, no one's gonna be. No one's gonna be responsible for their own little section, are they, or are they?
No, we don't want to do, our our goal is to have, so basically the way the setup would be is. These two units are gonna be a condominium association. They're gonna be a separate condo association, this is a single-family house. And then you have a condo association for these units. And then each, all four of those, either individuals or entities will be members of an homeowners association. That pays to maintain everything. I've done it before, it works very well.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, if there's no other questions from board members on the landscaping, we can move on to the architecture.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chair, um, so I'd like to um have Nurgis. Um. Uh, take the screen if you could and go through the architectural.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Um, good evening, uh, Mister Chair, members of the board, uh, for the record, Nurgis Brunelis from KDI. Uh, and then let me. So I'm gonna step. Step out a little bit farther out uh on the site uh and quickly show the rendering, um. So my focus will be on these eight townhouses um in the back, um, so. The quickly on the layout, the layout is basically. Uh, based on the side geometry and side constraints, so we have um. Uh, two buildings, uh, that has sets of four townhouses each, uh, you know, wo- units one, two, four closer to the, to the. Uh, cul-de-sac, if you will, uh, they sort of are converging towards the central driveway while uh. Units five to eight, uh, sort of recessing in a di- diagonal line facing the central, uh, the central sort of drive. Uh, one thing to mention as well is that, you know, side uh slopes uh back once you go south, um. Towards, towards the back of units, uh. Five to eight, um. Uh, quickly on the layout, um, uh, I'll go through unit layout, typical unit layouts later on, but quickly on each building, uh. Plans, uh, so units uh almost identical. In terms of layout, but th- they either um atta- attached to to so each other aligned or mirrored to each other based on the, just on the driveway location. Um. And so the the, this is the building in the back where these units are just sort of placed one next to each other in line. Um. So quickly, the whole side roof line, uh, you see sort of uh. Uh. Complicated roof line, but all gabled roof. Uh, roofs, uh, going into unit layouts, uh, they basically have, we have. Two. Two different, uh, a little bit different basement and first floor plans, uh, be- different because previously mentioned side slope towards the back where we introducing sort of walkout basements. Uh, shown on the right for the units, uh, five to eight. Uh, and uh, the units one, two, four closer to the, to the street, those will be a. You know, like traditional basement units with the light wells, uh. Um, out of them for ingress and light, uh, so here with uh, and starting from basement, we'll have um. Uh, family room, uh, and bedroom as well as full bath and mechanical area. Uh, same except on on the walkout units, we're gonna walk out to the patio, um. On the units five to eight, um. First floor, two-car garage from the entry. Uh. And then we have half bathroom, sort of living area with the living room, dining and kitchen. Um, walkout to patio or. Um. On the back units, we're gonna have like a walkout to the, to the balcony. Uh, second floor, all bedrooms, uh, so the whole, the whole, um. The the units will be, um. Uh, you know, unit area approximately like thirty-six hundred eighty square feet, um. And a parking four hundred fifty square feet garage, uh, those are two-car garages and four bedrooms and three and a half bath units, so you see three. Three, um. Three bedrooms on the second floor with two full baths, uh, walking closets, laundry, and then. Three bedrooms on the second floor with two full baths, uh, walking closets, laundry, and then there's another bedroom in the basement. Top floor will have an attic like as a bonus room, uh, with some cathedral ceiling, uh, and then just the roof plan. Going into the over, you know, a couple of renderings from like sort of bird's eye view, um. I can start talking about, uh, architectures itself, so. Sort of on the side of the, of those buildings, we introduce sort of, um, geometry, uh. And, uh, we sort of leading up, up to the roof line where we have, uh, on attic floor, we introduced the Nantucket style dormers. Uh, with the two gables and one shed in the middle, so basically, that's what is the Nantucket dormer. Um, you quickly see this driveway towards, towards those townhouses, those ornamental, ornamental, oh, I'm sorry. Ornamental trees previously mentioned and. Uh, and sort of in the back, you see, uh, side sloping towards walkout basement units is facing this na- nature. Uh, this is quick view, um, of the, from the cul-de-sac, from the driveway where we see. The back of the units, and one thing to note, we paid a lot of attention to, uh, make the back of your new, your units, uh, attractive. Attractive as well, you know, adding a lot of architectural features, um, to it, um. So here we zooming in and go into the sort of, sort of like a pedestrian view, or. Where we showed this, uh, previously mentioned, uh, fieldstone, uh, fieldstone, um, fence, uh. Fieldstone wall with a picket fence on top of it, with sort of like maybe like a signage or address, uh, plate possibility. Uh, to be placed in this, at the entrance, um. So the back of the unit, in this case, one to two, we introduced those sort of, um, multi planner facade. Facade where we're sort of projecting and recessing these gabled, uh, massings, you know, with either recessed. Recess decks, um, where we introduce, um, you know, architectural elements as, um, gable brackets. Uh, uh, the patios will have, um. Yeah, the, the patios will have, um. Uh, the pergolas, uh, for the sun shade, um, when. And, um. Well, I think next slide will show sort of the, yeah, next slide, we'll, we'll look at the. If you front, if, if they will, of, of those units, uh, same, same idea, multi planner, where you have a portico with these, you know, brackets. As almost like a craftsman style column basis, um, you know. Another, another plane with the gable above the garage and then sort of recessed, uh, main mass of the building. Uh, we adding, um. Traditional trims, um, you know, um, return on the, on the, uh, return gables at the roof, uh, edges. To give a lot of character, um, to those units, uh, this is another view for, for those back units, um. Uh, same, same idea, uh, you see those, uh, um, you know. Vegetation islands in front of the porticos and, uh, sort of like traditional garage door. Another view from the, from the back. Um, this, uh, rendering shows, uh, the back of the walkout basement units, so there was like, uh. Um, look like a three, three story and a half, but those really like a walkout basements, so we have like three sides almost fully. Uh, underground while just walk out in the back, so here we had, we, we decided to introduce sort of, uh. Sort of walkout living area, uh, um, from the main floor, uh, from your kitchen and bedroom. I'm sorry, kitchen and, uh, living room, um. In terms of materiality, we, um, pro- proposing, uh, cementitious siding with the board bat and, and shingles. Uh, for the, for the facades, uh, you know, asphalt shingle. Uh, roofs and then, uh, you know, double hung look windows. With the traditional mountains and, uh. You know, composite railing most likely was sort of like, uh, most likely with the black aluminum balusters. You know, the, the, the color scheme sort of was chosen, chosen as a, as a earth tone colors, um. You know, if, if you will, colors found in the nature, you know, greens, uh. Beige, grays, sort of to blend in, uh, with the surroundings. And then, um, I probably not gonna go through each elevation. Um, you know, I mentioned the square footages and then. I think from here on, I'm, uh, gonna be open for the questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Chip, I know you were assigned as our liaison to the project for the board, do you wanna weigh in first here?
Yes, certainly, um, so, you know, I, I think they're following through on what they had originally. Uh, set out to do, which is kind of a New England theme, uh, ski kinda look. And I, I, you know, we, we, you can look at colors over and over again, and yet. I think these are kinda comfortable, I like the hardy black shingle and the, and the board and bat and. Kind of breaking up, uh, and, you know, it is a complicated roof line, uh, it works well. Um, the one thing we had talked about originally, which didn't seem to come through on this, was that on unit two. We were talking about the patio area being more between unit two and three. Um, cuz right now that patio on unit two almost touches the cul-de-sac, uh, and I know that would mean. Redoing some of the interior layout, but I still think that needs to get looked at. Uh, but other than that, I, I think there, I'd love to hear the other board's comments, but I think they've done, done well, this is not an easy build. You know, this is not an inexpensive build, there's a lot of angles, a lot of roof lines. Uh, and, and a bit complicated, so I give them credit for where they've come and what they've done.
Okay, thank you, uh, cause Sue, I saw your hand up first.
Um, I have, um. I may, if I may, I have a couple suggestions and then some, um. Questions, um, mostly like inside of the planning. Um, I saw some of the basement unit bathroom is missing toilet, I just wanna make sure you have. You put the toilet back in before you submitting the document. On the walkout basement one. Yeah, and then, um, the other comment I had was the wet bar on the basement, I don't know if that's. Much of the use, uh, I feel like that might be more like a maintenance issue, especially like with the unit has a light well. Because you can't really, like, the sink is gonna be basically the, the entire countertop, so. To me, it feels like you just wanna leave it as a countertop, um, and nothing, no sink in there. Um, but it's up to you to decide, and on the first floor, kitchen. You have a very long back counter, and I was wondering if you can. Rearrange that little bit, maybe like the sink moves to the island and you can shrink a little bit, so. On the dining room side, if you can make a little bit of like a desk space, almost like a back counter desk, because. Right now, like, a lot of people work from home and I see like a lot of people working from like dining table. Or that kitchen island table, so, like, I see the opportunities for you to have a. Add a little bit of like a desk space for the people that's in, like, they can use it, um. And then another question was the, what type of fireplace are you planning to add it on the living room? That's my question.
I think this might be still to be determined, but if it, if it goes fully electric, uh, it might have to be. Either electric or maybe propane small.
Okay, because, um, so the reason I'm asking type of the fireplace is because I see that wall is a TV wall. And I'm gonna see the problem if it's the fireplace produce a lot of heat and somebody. Mount the TV on, above the fireplace, that's not really a good choice, um, so I wanna make sure like you. Sort of spec the fireplace, like, doesn't produce heat, much, a lot of heat. Um, otherwise you have to, like, put the warning sign for the people moving in, so they, they understand that. Um, and then when you go up to the second floor. Maybe you can change the door to the laundry room, to the pocket room, cuz right now I see like. The door opens into the room and it's very hard to like maneuver, once you are inside of the room to. Get out of the room with bunch of laundries in your hand, um, so maybe like a pocket door might work like functionally. Little bit better, um, and then the primary bathroom. I see you have a two sinks, I know it's really nice to, with the two sinks, but it looks a little bit tight to the shower door. Maybe you can just shrink it like even like three inches, four inches, and you can still have two sinks. And a little bit more like a breathing space for the shower door.
Thank you.
Um, and then the, sorry, I have a couple more, um. Outside, I really like how the outside looks, it's blending really nice, like the colorways, materials, I really like. One thing it kinda bothers me is the, maybe you can add the privacy fence on the side, one side of the patio. That facing the next unit, cuz if you see the renderings. Like each one of the patio, it's so open to like everywhere else, um. If you, yeah, if you stop that, so like if you can even add like a. Some kind of privacy screen on the left side, like when you're looking at patio, this view on the left side, like. Where it's about the next unit over, so the people feels a little bit more privacy. It doesn't have to be like solid wall, but it could be like slots or like ladders or something that goes with the architecture. Just to give a little bit of like a visual privacy, um, and then I saw, um. Light fixture page was on the last, um, for the entry doors. Like, I can't see the entry door area, it's so dark, even in your renderings, like, because you have a dark color. Unit entry, and then you have the roof on top of it, so I think you are proposing the. The cylinder type of light fixture, but maybe I, like, I can see, almost see like nice pendant fixtures. Um, cuz you have the cupboard, cupboard ceilings, or like even if you have a closed. Ceiling with like recessed downlight, so it more like illuminate the entire entry area. And then the one last thing is, I wanted to, this is, comes with, I don't know if it comes with signage later, but. Can you tell me why it's the unit number is going to be or like what that looks like, or do you have any, I, are you. Like thinking of unit numbers, what it looks like, how it looks like? At this point?
Uh, not yet, but we open for suggestions.
Okay, no, I wanted, I just wanted to see like if you, that was something to do with the sitting that I picture, I wanted to see where you're. Planning to put the unit numbers, so like it, it illuminates, um, not illuminates, but like nighttime, you can actually see the numbers. That was, that was all my comments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Greg, I saw your hand up.
Yep, thank you, uh, so just quick, I saw an elevation drawing that showed some, uh, grade changes. Um, I was just curious, I know those back units that are toward the wetland area. Um, is that grade change significant, or is it more gradual? Would some additional hardscape be needed there, it just seems very exposed to. That area, and I know it's more of a stormwater and civil question, but, um, just that area back there seems very open to. That wetland area, and I just wanted to make sure that was considered.
So I can answer that, yeah, that was considered, in, in especially in conjunction, Greg, with the, with the conservation commission, you know, respecting. Keeping as much area open, uh, as it goes towards the wetland as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Brian, I, uh, I thought I saw some retaining walls in a couple of these things, could we get some detail on that? Uh, I don't, um.
Yes.
Where, where are they, what are they made of, and, uh, it looked like there was some fencing on top of it, if we could get some detail on that too. What that's all gonna look like, from my memory is it's, uh, on the, um. If you were entering this area of these townhouses, there looked, appeared to be one on the right hand side. And then at the end of the last unit, there appeared to be one on that side as well, um. And I don't know if I just missaw that, or I'm understanding the, um, renderings correctly, but.
That's part of site civil, so we'll make sure that that's buttoned up when we, when we reach the, cuz as you know, there's a lot of work going on. Working with the neighbors on drainage concerns that they have specifically at, uh, Nablus Way and with the town engineer, so there's gonna be some modifications. Probably in those areas, so. We'll make sure.
Yep, I'm hearing a lot about that, I'm hearing a lot of chatter on that, so.
Yep.
Um, okay. Anything else from the board? Okay, if you could stop sharing, I'm going to open it up to the public and it'd be helpful if I could. See members of the public, at this point, um, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If, uh, you're a member of the public and have something, um, that you would like to either ask a question, make a comment on. Regarding the evidence that was presented at tonight's meeting, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. I see Scott Hanley. Mr. Hanley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Name and address for the record.
Will do, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, Scott Hanley, five Toby Lane, uh, just a few comments and maybe, um. One question, I guess, uh, I would, uh, echo your comments, uh, Mr. Chair, when. You had the question about, uh, snow storage, um, my, in my opinion, there appears to be right now. Somewhat of an inadequate, um. Snow storage, and I guess my question would be. Although with the operating, operation and maintenance schedule, who makes that determination as to. You know, when it's plowed versus when it's removed, uh, I, you know, that, that should be. Pretty laid out, uh, in black and white as to when that happens and what triggers that. That could be discussed, you know, it doesn't have to be discussed now, it could be discussed later, if that's part of a different plan, part of a future plan, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll be discussing that when we, um, if, if this application reaches that far, where it's the point where we have an oper, we're discussing an operation, the maintenance plan. We'll put details i- in there, um, regarding that, and it, it's pretty common for us to do that. And it, it's not really foreign to us, it's not a foreign concept to us.
Right.
By any stretch of the imagination.
I'm, I'm sure it isn't, uh, if I could go back to, uh, the, the landscaping, uh, presentation.
Yep.
Just my, my first thought is. It is, i- it's, it's borderline deforestation versus clear cut. You know, it's great to hear that there's four hundred and forty-five new plantings being put in, but. You know, how many, how many being removed, how many trees are being cut down, and how long is this site gonna last and sit there? Uh, just as being clear cut, why, you know, it's under construction. I have, I have a lot of concerns. I have, I have a lot of concerns about what that clear cutting does. And those concerns will be brought up in a week or two with the Conservation Commission, because that's probably under their purview, but. Uh, that that's a major concern of mine and I'm sure of some of the neighbors. Um, getting back to the architecture, I still think the first set of buildings. Is two deaths, uh, units two and three. Still have that, as Kasumi said a couple of weeks ago, they still have that pinch point of, you know, the shared driveway, it just looks like it's. Uh, just too many units in that building and I, you know, I just wanted to. Um, you know, voice that concern, when, when the development was more units. The square footage of each unit seemed to be less. Now that there's less units there, it's, you know, it's almost four thousand square foot units. That shared driveway is gonna be a concern, I think, for maybe neighbors and the owners, so I I just think it looks still a little too congested. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public, uh I see Paul Louvano. You could come on and give me your, uh hopefully I didn't massacre your name, your your name and your address, please.
Yep, thank you very much, Paul Levano, you got it correct, I thank you to the board, uh Paul Levano, one sixty-eight Salem Street. Um, I want to reiterate a few points that uh Scott made, uh just I won't go over them again. But going back to the landscaping, um like Scott said, you know, we're uh Attorney McGrail mentioned that no, this area is gonna be clear cut by necessity. Um, by my count, if I got my math right, we're putting in ninety-seven new trees. Which is great, how many trees are we taking out, you know, how many mature trees are coming, are being taken out of there, I think it's in the hundreds. And I don't think those ninety-seven trees are gonna come close to replacing what's being taken out of there. Um, that's a big concern. Also, how much fill is going into those into lot three? Um, because I know the grade is being reduced because it does drop off dramatically back there. And I'm curious as to know, what are the height differences for say the road surface between units four and five? And the adjacent lot below, and I know there's gonna be a retaining wall there, what's the height difference gonna be there, how high are these units gonna be sitting above? Everything else? Does anyone know that answer?
Well, I could, I could tell you, yeah, I could tell you this, the 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 key component is, is, you know, that would be more of a question for which we am site civil, who's not here. But the um, they are gonna comply with the height requirement uh for attached dwelling complex, which is thirty-five feet.
Not the height of the complex, I'm talking about the ground level, because you're gonna fill in that area back.
Well, I don't know if we're gonna fill it in to what extent, I just said, I just said, that's an issue for our site civil engineer who's not here tonight, this is more focused on architecture. And your question is somewhat related to architecture, but I just, I can't, I'm not qualified to answer that question, so we can table that and and get it back to you.
All right, okay, I like the like the the height difference between the road surface uh that. Joins Nablus Way and the and the road service that joins um Ed Smith next door and the wetlands there, cause I know there was a retaining wall. That was in a two-foot retaining wall, is it a ten-foot retaining wall? How tall are these buildings gonna be standing above everything else, so that that's a big concern and um. The sidewalk is definitely a concern, I mean, it's several, you know, it's a hundred feet to unit one, two hundred feet to unit four and five. Um, you know, there's gonna be kids, I think, I'm sure this is being marketed towards children and kids and families back there. Um, walking distance to the lake, things like that, um and. I just wanted to confirm, so you uh, I think Attorney McGrail mentioned it, but these houses or these townhouses are gonna be capped at thirty-five feet, which meets the town requirements, cause I know. When we built, we were restricted to twenty-two feet. For our building heights.
I don't know how that happened, because there's no district that requires twenty-two feet in wheat field, so I don't know when you built.
Okay, during COVID, twenty nineteen.
That, that's all I.
Okay.
If a single resident, the single residence district, which is the most, which is the most restricted district is thirty-five feet. The the industrial district where this is located, if it was a, if it was a different type of project, the height allowance is sixty feet. And where these, where these attached dwellings are going, but under the attached dwelling by law, the limit is thirty-five feet for attached dwellings.
Right, all right.
Yeah, if that helps you.
Does, thank you, uh tho- those are my biggest concerns is the is the clear cutting, the lack of mature, the removal of the mature trees. And the amount of fill that's gonna go back there, if, you know, I'd just like to get clarification on that as we move forward, you know, how high is that? Road service for units one through eight gonna be relative to the surrounding areas. Um, because that's gonna make a big difference to how they look to the neighbors and and the and the neighborhood, so thank you.
Yeah, understood, I I encourage you to uh continue to come to the meetings while we discuss site civil and they have their civil engineer and everyone there.
Yeah, and and I have a note, Mr. Chair, on that, Mr. Levano, we'll be prepared to give him that information at the next meeting, I I respect the question.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public that's here that would like to comment, I see Edward Smith. If you can just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yeah, Ed Smith, one sixty-two Salem Street. And um I just wanna say I share the concerns of Paul and Scott. Um, or my neighbors, the thing that um I'm worried about is the flooding. Because with all these trees that are gonna be taken down. Um, there's just not gonna be anywhere for the water to go, I know you're gonna put in retaining walls, but. Water's a very tricky thing. Now, even if you put whatever size retaining walls. With the snow there and everything else, I think it's gonna either hydroplain in our backyard. And also go down to New Salem and Appleton, which is in the back, now if you went right. In our backyard and looked over, it's not just a drop off, it's really steep, so that um.
So, Mr. Smith, I I I very much appreciate your concerns and 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 your comments. Uh, we're trying to focus tonight on landscaping and architecture, um uh you're not, this isn't the first time that, you know. Uh, the water and displacement and other things have come up, they're gonna be covered when we discuss, you know, site civil. And those types of issues, when the applicant has his appropriate engineers here. And the town engineers will have weighed in too, so we'll have a lot more information then that will, I think, be very helpful. And answer some of your questions and we'll have subject matter experts here that can answer those questions, but they're not here tonight. So, um I respect that of everyone's time, uh you know, we duly noted a lot of concerns in this area and we're certainly gonna cover that. And I appreciate your patience and coming to uh subsequent hearings and coming to all these hearings, but. We wanna keep this focused on, we're trying to really cover every aspect of this. A- as we go along here, as we do uh with all our projects and. It's important to have the right people in the room to have this discussion with you. Cause as Mr. McGrail said, and I'm in that same category, I'm not equipped to answer those questions for you, we really need uh the subject matter experts here.
No, I appreciate that, but um I just wanted to reiterate that so you can look at it the next time or what have you. Because um along with that, you got a perfectly balanced ecosystem, but back there with a lot of animals. And again, that's probably conservation, so um. There's deer, there's coyote, there's bald eagles, there's hawks. All that use that area to either drink from that water. That could be contaminated or will be contaminated, most likely be pesticides and other wild chemicals. And also the animals that live into in that little body of water that. It's actually a medium sized, I'd say, ecosystem. So uh just somewhat other things to think about, uh how would that be stopped? But that was all I wanted to say and uh I share those concerns with my neighbors and um. Just so you keep that in mind for the next time.
Certainly will, you you your concerns have been noted and uh. Um, you know, we'll hold, uh you know, Mr. McGrail does a pretty good job about keeping notes and answering questions as. Uh, his applicant uh during the right meeting, so. Uh, again, I ask for your patience and I ask you to continue to come to the hearings, cause your voice is very important. Um. And um, you know, with the end of this, at the end of public comment, I'll talk to Mr. McGrail about when we are gonna cover site civil. When he thinks we're ready to try to give you guys an idea of what night of the hearing that that will be covered, so you can make sure uh. Reserve your time to to attend that meeting.
Very good.
Thank you. Uh, I see Kevin Genie, again, apologies on the name if it's wrong, if you could just give us your uh name and address, please.
Uh, good evening, my name's Kevin Genie, I'm here in behalf of uh the Abudders Nablus Realty Trust. I just wanted to say that uh my clients share some of the concerns with the neighbors regarding the. Uh landscaping, the effect it will have on drainage and the other issues for the project. But I just wanted to note that the developers have uh been gracious in working with my clients. And addressing some of these issues and concerns and um I look forward to working with them in the future of some of these issues. But I appreciate that the board is uh addressing them tonight and uh. I'll look forward to working with the board and with Mr. McGrail in the future.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, going once, twice. Closing public comment, back to the board, pleasure the board.
Mr. Chair, quick question, um I guess it's for Brian, that's not, is that's not conservation back there, is it?
We're not developing in the conservation area, Joe, but the but the site is is very large, so a portion of the property is conservation land, it's subject to Conservation Commission jurisdiction.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not taking it, you can't build on any of that, you can just build next to it, right?
No, no, and we're respecting all of their, you know, buffers and et cetera, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is a question what we want to attack next time.
Yeah, uh well, one of the things I wanna just know, if you, Brian, if you have a good guess, when you're gonna be ready, cause site civil seems to be. The issue, I mean, the traffic waiting on eighteen units, there's no issues with traffic with any of our subject town air experts. This this site civil seems to be, you 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 heard some minor comments on architecture. You appear to be going in the right direction there as far as the board's concerned, but the site civil stuff does seem to be um. Bubbling up to the top for people's uh concerns, wh- when would you expect to? Uh, come to this board ready to have that discussion?
So we, so um you just heard from Mr. Genie who represents the the folks on Nablus Way, they have two subject matter experts working on their behalf. We've had meetings with them, they were kind enough to give us a a memo of their concerns, their engineers' concerns. Uh, which they shared with the board, um you've received a memo from the town engineer. Um, we have had a meeting with the town engineer to discuss uh his concerns that he raised and also the Abudders' concerns. So he understands them, so we're in the process of doing some revisions, recalculations. Uh, that when done will be shared with um the subject matter experts, that being the town engineer and um. The Nablus Way engineers, so everyone has a chance to look at that and then maybe fine tune that. So, um, you know, my, you know, I know Rich Williams is working on those um modifications, I'll call them for lack of a better term or. To address concerns, um. And and to then give folks a chance to look at that before we come back, so I I don't see that happening in the next two weeks. Um, and we don't wanna waste the board's time or the public's time to just come back here and talk about. Um, you know, items that, you know, we just kinda go in circles on, if you will. Um, so I would suggest that, you know, we would continue this for uh the second meeting in June. And hopefully we're in a position to have a substantive conversation at that time on site civil, and if not, we're not yet. Um, we'll let you know, because as you know, we're we're also going back and forth with conservation and um planning board.
Yeah.
But I don't think we're gonna be ready um in two weeks.
No, I just wanna know, so neighbors obviously wanna hear this and, you know. They don't wanna have their time wasted either, so I wanna, you know, to the best we can to give them a signal of when we were ready to talk about this was my. Was my goal, I'm also gonna be in touch, I'll I'll reach out to Bill Renault as well, who's the town engineer. And check his availability for whatever night we think this is gonna uh be on our board, so he could have, he could be here to comment as well. So you're thinking the twenty-fifth of June?
Uh, yeah, we're not gonna be ready before then for sure, and you know, I'm not sure about then, so um. I think that's realistic, I I think my client is gonna push for that to be the case, he's on here now and obviously he wants to, you know, keep keep moving forward in a positive manner, so. I think that's a reasonable goal, two weeks from now is not a reasonable goal to produce stuff and get it to the town engineer review and get it to our. Our um our neighbors, um so um I think a continuance for a month will be appropriate.
Okay. And you heard a couple of suggestions and asked requests for board, from board members to look at a couple of things, I I didn't see anything major, but uh if you could look at what uh. And I'm I'm ready to share my notes if if you need.
Yeah, I I get I get them all, we appreciate all the comments and you know, we're gonna look at the sidewalk and the driveway with Joe, um. And then, you know, we've got Kasumi's comments, appreciate all those, uh your comments on the retaining walls and the cross cross sections. Um, I've got Mr. Louvano's request on the uh, you know, the differences in the height, that we'll be prepared to give him that information. Um, and then um I'm also gonna have a conversation on the hardscape in the rear, because I think that's why we're not doing it, but Greg had mentioned that, we'll just, I'll just double check. That's the reason we haven't done anything back there, so, and I got a couple of other notes too, but those are the highlights.
Or drainage from the 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 site is obviously a concern for all the neighbors, but Mr. Smith's next door and he's he's raised that repeatedly, so.
Yeah, um, that's part of the site civil.
Yep, okay. All right. I think you have a a clear path, uh clear instruction from us on what we're we're hoping to see. Um, and uh unless board members have another comment, I'm looking for a motion to continue until. Uh, I think our second meeting is the June twenty-fifth.
Well, I think it is.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue this hearing to June twenty-fifth, where hopefully we will discuss site civil.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, uh hearing any further discussion, seeing none, we'll do regular voting members. And uh, I'm seeing Greg, I don't know if, we'll do regular voting members and Greg then, all right, Chip?
Yep.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, that matters, continue to June twenty-fifth. All right, next up, new hearings. Thank you, case twenty-five forty-two, six oh one uh Edgewater Drive for Eastern Bank. Is someone here for that?
Yes, um, good evening, uh Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Richard Vatten from Vatten Brothers Sign Company, uh representing Eastern Bank uh regarding the sign application. I'm also here with uh Tina Stovlin and Philip Lee from the bank. Um, could I share my screen?
Yeah, please do.
So uh Eastern Bank is uh is currently. Uh, moving into six oh one Edgewater Drive, uh they're consolidating two of their other offices, uh one in Lynn and one in Burlington. Uh, and at Edgewater, they'll have over two hundred employees uh doing operations. Logistics, finance, uh retail administration and general services. Um, so this is a very important office for them. Uh, the uh currently, um there is a variance that was. Uh, that we actually um uh procured for this building uh in two thousand and three for a. For a wall sign that's in this same same position, uh for when it was Epsilon's headquarters. Um, what we're requesting uh is a uh the installation of a wall sign. Uh, the wall sign is comprised of, excuse me, individual letters, uh the logo is sixty inches tall. The uppercase letters are forty-two point seven inches tall and the. Uh, lowercase letters are thirty point seven inches tall. Uh, the letters themselves light up, they have a dark blue background uh and white sides. Um, and uh there's, it would be individually mounted to the face of the building. Um, the uh. Request, uh the reason that we're designing the sign in this location is, again, where it was the location of the prior sign. It's also the the um the most. Uh, prominent and uh logical position for a sign on the building. Um, the sign itself is actually just. Um, the sign itself is actually just uh viewed from within uh Edgewater Park. Um, and it's received approval by Hobbs Brook, which is the owner of the building as well as many of the other buildings in the, in the area. Um, let's see, I scroll down. This is a photo of a prior Epsilon sign. Uh, there were actually three different versions of this Epsilon sign. All of those were eight foot by twenty-two feet um in size uh going back to two thousand and three. And now we can see where the sign is located. Um, it really is solely uh viewed from Edgewater Drive as you're coming around that bend. Uh, there are no residences that could see it and it's facing into the park. Uh, this is a very important sign for, for this new location. Uh, there will be people, you know, uh coming in uh to this office uh all day and into the early evening. Uh, it's one of the reasons why we're requesting it to be illuminated. And um uh I think that that pretty much covers it.
Great, thank you. Uh, before we go, I open up the board. I just want to note that we have correspondents from uh Chief Michael Sullivan, the Wakefield Fire Department, from the Engineering Department, the Department of Public Works, and from the Conservation Commission, none of which have any uh applicable comments or issues with this application. Open it up to the board for questions, comments.
I mean, Mr. Patton addressed one of the questions I had, which is why does it need to be lit? And, and if the reason it needs to be lit is because somebody may be looking for it in early evening or in the winter when it gets dark and there's still gonna be people there. I guess I would just want to limit the time that it could be on. I don't think we need Eastern Bank shining twenty-four hours a night, even twenty-four hours a day, even if it is uh only seen inside of the Hobbs Brook world. So I would just ask that you know, it, it goes off when office hours go off nine o'clock or something reasonable like that.
Our uh, the prior variance that was for the sign in that location uh did, did have the uh the operating hours ending at nine P M.
Look at that. We don't change much, do we?
Neither do I, I'm afraid.
Chip, I hate to tell you, it was from two thousand and three and you voted on it, so.
I probably, probably thought that, probably made that same comment too, if we had been recorded.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board?
We have no problems with the sign. I think it actually looks better. The Eastern Bank sign looks better than the one that's up there now.
Yeah. Hey, wait a second. I voted on that sign, Joe.
There you go.
That one was from two thousand and three, but yeah.
Time's age for changing.
All right, anything else from the board? Mr. Patton, if you could stop sharing your screen, that would be appreciated.
Am I off?
No, it's generally up top, right underneath here. Usually a red button stops share.
Okay. Thank you. I got a tutorial on this by my son a few minutes ago, but.
All right. Are there any members of the public here that are here to comment on this application? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Going once, going twice. Closing public comment. Back to the board, pleasure of the board. I think we're ready for some motions unless someone else has a question or comment.
No, I move that we grant uh the variance under Article thirteen, Section one ninety dash seventy-seven dash D two and E one A of the Wakefield zoning bylaws to allow Eastern Bank to, to uh have Patton Brothers install the sign as presented to us tonight. By the Patton Brothers dated three twenty twenty-five for their plan.
Seconded.
Well, before we go and second that, Chip, do you want to throw in the condition about the nine P M?
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you. And we will continue uh as the previous variance also had with a nine P M uh off time for the backlit light letters. Thank you.
Second the amendment motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, we'll do regular voting members and Kirsten, are you here? Okay, we'll do regular voting members and Greg. Chip?
Yep.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is unanimous. Good luck with your sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, case twenty-five forty-three, Wakefield Living LLC, sixty-two Foundry Streets. Mr. McGrail, I believe this is yours.
It is, Mr. Chair. Thank you. For the record, attorney Brian McGrail uh here on behalf of Wakefield Living LLC. Uh, sixty-two Foundry Street. With me is uh Hugo Di Biassi, representing the ownership group of Wakefield Living LLC. Uh, we had had a pre-application meeting with your board uh on this. Uh, this is the uh project that is um the fifty-eight uh condominium units, um former home of Crystal Lumber on Foundry Street um that was approved by your board. Um, I'm happy to report that the, the project, um, there's approximately thirty-six of the residential units that are under agreement and ready to close on. We're gonna have a discussion a little bit later in your meeting on the certificate of occupancies uh for this project. But the specific request on this application and the board uh informed us prior to a formal uh consideration, you wanted, I should say, prior to any consideration, you wanted a formal application filed. Uh, as you know, when this project was originally um permitted under one ninety thirty-two of our bylaw, it allowed for the fifty-eight units in conjunction with a resident, I'm sorry, with a restaurant use, a three thousand square foot restaurant uh on the site. Um, we are requesting a modification to the approvals that will allow a fifty-eight unit multifamily apartment building uh in conjunction with a restaurant or professional and business office uses. Um, the, the reason for that, um, my clients have uh had a, a restaurant broker working on an efforts to uh lease this restaurant since March of two thousand uh twenty-four. And um they have not had any success. They've had a number of people looking at it. Um, they have built this um in good faith to uh be fitted, ready for a restaurant. It has all of the uh requirements for a restaurant, including the ductwork going up through the roof, uh including um all of the plumbing and ventilation required for a restaurant. They're enthusiastic or were enthusiastic to have a restaurant uh in here. Um, and they still haven't given up on that. Um, what, what they are looking for at this point is another option um for professional or business offices uh in that space. Um, the, we had to reach out um ironically um from the broker uh today and uh with an update and her comment was unfortunate, we've had no interest in the space as of late. Uh, she states, we've reached out to um and networked with other brokers. People are very worried about the economic future. The market is flooded with places to sell and lease in the city and surrounding as well. Most of the feedback has been it is remote location, uh not enough foot traffic at this point in time. Um, we're looking forward to trying to get this filled at some point, but things aren't looking good at this point. Um, she gives a list of a number of people that uh they've spoken to, which I really don't want to share, because that's kind of confidential for those businesses. She states, in addition, we have e-marketed the brochure to our database a couple of times. There's also been a website in Biz Buy Sell. Um, let me know if you'd like to further the stuff, the discuss. We continue to um uh um try to uh rent this space. So um what fortunately, um, the Di Biassi Corporation, um, they are currently in their postmark uh office building in Reading that they built, which is in downtown Reading. They have their offices there, which are very successful. You can drive by. It's a very uh tastefully done with signage um in streetscape. And um they would actually, they need more space. They've outgrown that, so um they're actually looking for space. So their goal is to build this out immediately and move their corporate op, offices to this location uh if it's allowed. Um, and uh so that is a request. Um, you know, again, they're not foregoing the right um or the opportunity at a later point to have a restaurant come in here. They're probably not going to be located with their business um here um forever. Uh, and I think is, is um this street is, is a work in prog, uh progress. I think you know that. Um, there's been a lot of great residential developments here. Um, I think there's more to come. Uh, that's what the town encouraged in two thousand and fifteen for a revitalization of this area. I think as it further develops and um and it further um kind of gets finished off, if you will, um, there's gonna be um a lot more interest. And I think the board understands, you know, to you know, to put an office in is expensive, but fitting out an office is a lot more financial, financially feasible than a restaurant, you know, any any restaurant that comes here, the way the market works, they're gonna get a cold shell. That's the way it works and they have to build it out. So you're talking, you know, for any restaurant that's gonna come to this area that's not fully developed at this point and fully operational to where it's hopefully gonna be at some point. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for that, for that fit out and build out and, and, you know, I just don't think it's gonna happen in the very near future, unfortunately, but I do think there's an opportunity for it to happen again as this area develops. So we're respectfully asking for your consideration um to allow this uh alteration or modification to decisions to allow this other possible use. Professional offices and, and business offices, I want to say, are allowed by right in the industrial district. So it's not like we're asking for a special permit for this use. It's really just an amendment to the special permit that went along with the multifamily for uh the mixed use uh component of the project. Um, so that's, that's a request. We're happy to answer any questions and provide any more detail that the board would, would desire, Mr. Chip.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll open it up to board members. Greg?
Yeah, I think um Brian said it best. They, they fit it out for a restaurant and it sounds like if they're going the other way, it'd probably be a little trickier, especially where they are with construction right now. Um, so, yeah, I think um fitting it out as an office would be easier than switching back to a restaurant.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, if no one else is gonna speak up, I am. I don't want to give up on the restaurant use. Uh, I agree that um the street's a little bit of a work in progress. Um, I confess that uh as a West Side resident, when I'm going that way, I go down Lake Street, not Foundry, because of the condition of the street. Uh, so I, I imagine that it is fairly tough to market at this point, but I, I would want to, if other board members agreed, I would want to sunset this office use and to, you know, make them come back and try to put a restaurant in, at some further time. I do agree with the, the notion that the, the dominoes on Foundry Street are just starting to fall in terms of turning to housing. Uh, and I think other property owners are gonna come along uh and add more housing to that, which would create more of a um a customer base uh and change the, the whole look of that street. So that's what my head is. And uh I don't know what the exact number of years is to give them time to kind of depreciate, you know, their costs and converting it to office, but I would want them to have to come back to the board uh at some point in time. Um, with the idea that we want a restaurant in there and we're not giving up on that. So I throw that out to board members.
So, Mr. Chairman, I certainly appreciate where you're coming from. I guess the question I have on that is twofold. One is how do we structure that? Um, whether it's three years, five years, whatever, I, I kind of feel like five might be the right term. And so, you know, five years from now, they've got like, okay, we've got a restaurant broker. No, we're still not getting anything. And I guess what I would feel more comfortable about is, is because the Di Biassis have long, good, great working relationship with the town, I'd be happy to have them as tenants. But I think that we would go down the wrong road if we opened it up to all business or professional use. So I guess I'd want to limit it to their corporate office or their office uh and not allowed to be sublet or anything else that, that, and I think then you know, they, they grow out or they don't have a Wakefield interest, they're gonna be more likely to try to get a restaurant in there um down the road. However, if it was just all business, then be like, eh, we tried, still not getting it. So tho, those would be my thoughts, that if it's just them and their use and that's what they really want to do, it's their building. I think that would be great and having their presence in town would be wonderful. Uh, but to have it open to any and all, uh, and open, I'm, I'm troubled by that.
Okay. I uh, no, I hear where you're coming from. And it might be a combination of our two thoughts, maybe. I don't know. Um, anybody else? I think uh we're wide open ideas here, board members, trying to figure this out.
Yeah, I mean, I like the five year. That's what you're thinking. You think that's a stretch? I don't know. I mean, I hate to have them. What are you gonna move in there? It's gonna take them a year to do it all. Not a year, but it's just gonna get settled and then come back a year later. Um.
No, that's what I'm from, Bill. I want them to be able to, if they're gonna put investment into, to their own offices. I don't want that to be, uh, uh, I'm cognizant of that and I don't want to be trivial about that. And I want them to be able to realize some time for the amount of money that they're gonna put and put for their offices. But, you know, the other side that I see is though, you know, I do a, all kinds of this type of work in, in Boston and Cambridge and Somerville. It's hard to legislate retail and restaurants. You know, the decisions come out of those boards all the time and we hit, we see empty storefronts. So I, while I don't want to give up on the restaurant, I don't want to see an empty shell on, on this, because I think they've done a good job with the building. Uh, we appreciate that. We appreciate the, you know, the quality of the work they've done around town. But I do think at some point years from now, when the street's better and there's more housing, I, I do think they're gonna be able to make a restaurant work there, so.
And I, and I think, Mr. Chairman, that it will be um financially beneficial for them to do that at some point. So I think it's an easy swap when, when that time comes. But I don't want, I'll use Eastern Bank, cause you know, Eastern Bank to have a uh, a presence there and then all of a sudden, oh, well, we can't get them out. They've been there for five years.
No.
That's why I would say it'd be only there for their use only.
Yeah. No, I appreciate your comment, because I do agree with that. We don't need another ATM and something else there. That doesn't do it for me either. Uh, Kirsten, I see your hand up.
Yep, my apologies with my mute button. And I'm sorry I didn't respond last time either. My son was playing with my puppy and I couldn't even begin to speak to you. Um, so I wanted to uh say, Tom, I agree with you that we see this all the time in Boston and Cambridge, and I think that activating the space right now is better, probably to help the street come along. Um, and that putting a term on it of five years probably makes sense. And I think Chip, if the term is on it and they're kind of regulated to a lease term of that as well, that you could maybe release a little bit on it has to be them. You just are saying that they really can only commit themselves to a five-year term regardless of who it is. Um, as, as an option to open it up for them, but I agree with you, having them in there and having it be active and coming back to revisit um makes sense. And I support that.
Great. Brian, you, you said these guys did the um, the new restaurant over in Reading Square. Is that correct? No?
No, uh, Di Biassi?
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, they did the postmark building over in Reading Square, Tom.
Okay.
And there is a rest- And there is a restaurant there, but they have corporate offices there also.
Okay, I was thinking that new restaurant in the old post office, that's, you know.
Yeah, that is.
Nineteen seventeen or whatever.
That's a DBO C project. Yep.
How long did it take them to get that restaurant in there?
So Hugo can answer that.
Hi, everyone. Uh, for the record, Hugo Dubiassi, part of uh, Wakefield Living LLC and part of the Dubiassi Companies, uh, family owned and operated business uh, here on the North Shore. Uh, postmark where current corporate offices on Haven Street across from the uh, post office. Uh, was the old post office. Um, so post nineteen seventeen. Um, so that was, there was three commercial condos on the front of that project. Uh, we retained and opened up our corporate office in one of the uh, commercial condos. We sold the other two commercial condos back in twenty. Uh, um, all the units were sold in June of twenty twenty one. Um, the first purchaser of the quote restaurant space um, where post nineteen seventeen. Held on to that for, I think, eighteen months. Uh, couldn't get any traction with whatever the platform that that owner wanted to do. He then sold it to the new and uh, current restaurant group that's in there. And I believe their one-year anniversary was uh, about a month ago. So they opened up in uh, about this time in twenty twenty four. Um, so we marketed that whole project um, from inception. We broke ground on construction December of twenty nineteen. Um, and we marketed those spaces as restaurant and retail spaces. Um, and I mean, it's public record, so that I I think the deed for the restaurant took us two and a half years to find a buyer. Um, to buy that space, and it was in its raw shell condition. Um, so meaning like uh, uh, Brian mentioned, the tenant or the um. Uh, unit owner, uh, restaurant owner went in and and did all the fit out. Um, so similar here in Wakefield. Um, the restaurant space. Um, how we, how we have it built today is per the plans that were on the uh, approval plans and the building permit plan. So. Um, it's, it's been rigged and wired and and ready to go for a future tenant fit out of a restaurant. Um, we just, uh, you know, we, we, we haven't seen any traction there. So I hope that answers. Or clarifies that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
So you go question. Are you planning on keeping that unit, or are you selling, trying to sell it as well?
Uh, so if the board uh, would um, uh, make a motion to approve our request. Um, my office right now in in total space is about eighteen hundred square feet. Uh, we'd be looking to move into this uh, space in Wakefield. Um. To be quite frank, I need my own private office along with my other siblings that I work with every day.
Why?
You don't know. Um, and so we, it's uh, you know, we all live in the area uh, uh, in Lynnfield, and it's right down the street from us, and we love Wakefield and uh. You know, we just think it's a great, it's a great uh, stepping stone, I think, is how we, how we also see it. Um, where we do think a restaurant uh, could be. Um, a great fit for that, uh, maybe not a full-service restaurant, but maybe, you know, maybe more of a uh, like a lunch and and cocktail type place. Um, but uh, yeah, uh, for right now, Chip, our, our plan would be to uh, fit that out uh, as an office for us. Um, and we actually even looked a little bit on how we could do the underground plumbing. For a future for for the, for the office, but also be in the back of the house where the future restaurant would probably be. So the the idea is not to go in and jackhammer up the whole slab on grade, and, you know, so we are kind of thinking. Long-term too. Um, but. Uh, we did put it out to market for lease and for sale. Um. Um, and uh, we would like to hold on to it uh, for a bit, because we do think there's a potential uh, uh, you know, value add here uh, as Foundry Street gets built out.
So I guess my question, and I appreciate persons. Thought of, you know, allowing somebody else to be in there too with no greater than a five-year lease. But that might be restrictive. Do you have any issue with? It being you and and the DBO C companies to be the one. And you can always come back and ask. To change it again. I mean, that's not impossible as well, but at least to begin with that thought process.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would, um, you know, um. We opened up our office, I want to say in Reading in twenty twenty-two. You know, we're in twenty twenty-five, so it's three years. Um, you know, I think we would, we would like to see at least five, five years of knowing that we can call that home. Um, and um, you know, I, I don't, unless Brian has anything else to say on our behalf, um, I don't see an issue with it just being us. Um. You know, and and if we want, you know, we can also put in. Conditions that, you know, we come back and have uh, conversations with the board too down the road, right, in three to three to four years, and maybe that's just to start the conversation rather than waiting till five years from now, we come back to the board and. And, you know, we're kind of all, you know, caught what's, what's going on. Um. Uh. So I think, yes, Chip, we would be open to um, it being just us. I mean, we don't, we don't have any other plans to. Fit it out and then lease it. Um. We have plans to try to make our office bigger, and we currently can't do that. Um.
All right, Kasumi, I see your hand up.
Is the um, is the space already has a capacity for? Restaurant use like um, plumbing, like, for example, like. Three or four bathroom capacity, and then when you move in, you're just gonna. Your build out will be more like a temporary. Office build out, just in case if you have somebody coming in and you can move out.
Sure. So we, so per our um, per the project that we acquired in in August of twenty twenty-three, this, this project, uh, the building permit was already issued. On that building permit uh, and what's in place today. Are uh, the requirements for a future full-service restaurant. So there's a gas line there. There's a grease trap already installed. Uh, there's provisions for uh, proper um. Electricity and HVAC. Um, we haven't installed the actual duct for the HVAC or the makeup air or the black iron duct. Because that's all kind of dependent on what type of restaurant and use and kitchen, open concept or not. Um, but the provisions within the. Condominium itself and the, and the different, and going up through the roof and bringing it up all the way up past the roof, uh, that's all there. Um, so it's a matter of the, the, you know, tenant fit out uh, package, depending on what type of restaurant use it would actually be. Um, right, right now, it's, it's all the storefronts, all the facade is per the plans. Um, the doors, everything is, is the same there, and we, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't propose, should. We get the ability to move our office there, propose any changes on the outside besides signage, you know, to put our own signage up. Um. Uh, and on the inside right now, uh, we're waiting to pour the slab on grade in this area, just because. We needed, we need to install the plumbing on where the restaurants are gonna be. So if a restaurant came in and said they needed four to six. Restroom stalls, that's different than an office each right now that just needs two. But the main sewer connection is. Is stubbed and ready for a full restaurant today. Um, so I, I would just say that everything to that restaurant space is stubbed for a restaurant to come in and start doing the fit out.
Okay.
You go. How about your build out? She asked about the quality of your build out. Um, you know, if it's gonna be dismantable or.
Uh, yeah, so what we would do, what we're, what we're trying to do is work. With all the storefront, glazing windows and all that, make the conference room work with that. Uh, we would put the bathrooms in the back right-hand corner uh, in the back of the house for us. Um, where the kitchen, the, where the back of the kitchen would be, would probably be all open storage, because we have a lot of storage needs. Um, not for, not for construction, just a lot of. Um, uh, bother, very old school, a lot of paper. Um. But uh, so we are looking at trying to, you know. Uh, in a perfect world, we can do the bathrooms for a future restaurant, but again, that's depending on occupancy and and use and how many, you know, people will be there. Um, but our, you know, our goal would be to come in, pour the slab, and then we would just be doing uh, interior walls, really. Uh, so yeah, very, very simple to take out.
Yeah, if I can just add for the record, I do not have many developer clients that would have the coverage like the DBO S's do to put their corporate office in the building that they built and sold fifty-eight units. So that's a tribute to to the quality of work that they do, um, that, you know, there. And Hugo actually said that. He said, it'd be kind of convenient being here, because if some of the owners have any issues, you know, which hopefully they don't, but we're right downstairs that we can talk to them. So. I think the board knows that the quality of work at the DBO C family is second to none.
Okay. Uh, board members. Let's try to uh. Wrap this in a bowl here. Um. With a folks' thinking, pleasure of the board. We've heard some ideas. I'm on board with the five years. Reserving it for. Their corporate office. With a return in year three. Back to our board to ask them to start to market a restaurant.
Yeah, or at least start a conversation as to where they're at, where their thoughts are. I mean, they can come back to us. They can come have a conversation with any of us. We're, we're any meeting. We're nice people.
Yeah, I, I would like to mandate one, though, because I, I, you know. To the point that everyone's made, I'd like. I'd like to see what Foundry Street looks like in three years, too.
Yeah, I hope it looks better than it does today.
Right. So if there's other ideas, I'm open to them, but other than that, you know, folks who are on board with that, we're gonna need a motion.
Where do we, where do we stand with just them as compared to? Open office use.
They, they've made it pretty clear that they're uh, it's just gonna be them, so I think we hold them to it.
That's where I'm at. I'm good with all of that.
To your point, if something dramatic comes up.
Come on back.
We have a good relationship. They've done good work in this town. They've got a good reputation. They could come back and have a conversation with us.
Do you want to open it up to the public, just by chance, that there might be somebody here for that?
Yeah, uh, and I've got some correspondence from the town. And as you can, uh. As you probably are aware, there's, uh, I got the. Response from Chief Sullivan. And from the Conservation Commission who have no comments on this. And with that, uh, if there are members of the public here that wish to comment on this application, please use the raise and function in Zoom. Uh, I see a person, Barbara Rose. If you could give me your name and address, please. You're on mute right now.
Um, yes, hi. My name is Barbara Rose, and I'm a contract holder of one of the condominiums in the Dubiassi development known as Renly. And I'm wanting to know, because I've been here for almost two months now waiting to move in. If the decision on this office space versus. Restaurant space will have a bearing and determination on the final CO, so that we might all be able to move in to the building.
Well, that's a matter that's gonna come up later in the uh, meeting, but this, this decision here on whether to amend their special permit will not. Ever bearing on uh, the timing of the certificate of.
Thank you for that um, answer. Appreciate it.
Yep. Anybody else? Going once. Going twice. Public comment is now closed. Back to the board, pleasure of the board.
So Brian and and Tom, bear with me.
Uh, so if I can just insert, Chip, if you don't mind, just. So this is a little bit unique. Did you contemplate this?
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Yeah, well, how to vote, just, just because. So there's no problem. There's a couple of things here. So the variant, there's a variance on this project that's part of the amendment. Variances cannot be, and that's just related to the parking, but variances can't be. Conditioned upon time limits or ownership. Or 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 use, uh, you know, by a certain person. That's not allowed, but I don't think amending the variance has a, that has any impact, because. The special permit, which allows a use, is what you want your clause into, if you will. I mean, uh, in that, in a special permit. Um, can be. Um, can have a condition on it for a term of years. Uh, and a special permit, unlike a variance, can be conditioned by limited duration. To the term of ownership or use by the applicant. Which is exactly what you're doing, but this is a little bit unique, because.
But don't we have two special permits?
You do, yeah. One's related to dimensional, but I would amend that also to make that conditioned on the.
Right, but I don't think we need to amend the variance.
Well, you do, because the variance was for parking related to relief for a restaurant. Now it's gonna be for also an office. In the, in the, because it.
But if it isn't, but okay.
Because, Chip, the variance gave relief for the number of parking spaces we needed for the restaurant. Now, it's.
But that's gonna be great. That's gonna be greater than for the office.
Correct, but you still need to amend it to reference that it also applies to an office. That variance, not just a restaurant use.
Okay.
All right, if you follow me. But the, the, the um, the legalese that we, we need to navigate, and it's navigatable, I just want to make sure that we get it right, is. This is unique, because. The applicant here is Wakefield Living LLC, which is an LLC set up by the the DBO S's specifically for this project. And they're the applicant as owner. Um, but it's not the DBO C corporations that's going to be the condition of the occupant. So this can be done. Um, and and I've dealt with it before, but, you know, what I would respectfully suggest is. If we're all on board, I think we know where the board's going with this, and we appreciate it very much. But that we, that now that you want to put that condition on it, which I think works and is acceptable. That you just continue it for two weeks, so, so I can present something for the board for consideration on how to appropriately make that. That motion and how it will be incorporated into a subsequent decision to make sure that we get it right.
That's above my pay. Great. Mr. Lucy?
I'm fine with that, because I, I'm with you. I want to, uh.
Let's get it right.
Let's get it right. So if uh, if your applicant's fine with two weeks, you know. Uh.
And I would tell him to start looking at where he wants to put bathrooms and everything else.
Yeah, I think we've signaled that we're on board, that we just gotta get the legalese right.
Yeah, and I want to make it right. I want to make sure it's, it's right for the board, you know, and um, with your permission, Chief, Mr. Chair, I have a conversation with Town Council, Mullen.
Yeah, please do.
That he's comfortable and that the board is uh, is protected with what we're doing here, and um, and I think, you know, we'll be able to work that out, but I just don't think I want to do that at nine o'clock at night.
No, I'm with you, because I, I, I thought if we did this, we were just gonna be able to amend the special permit. Uh, I forgot about the, the variance on the spaces for the restaurant, so.
Yeah, and that's part of the application, and that's not, that's not an issue. That's pretty simple. The bigger issue is it's gonna be conditioned upon. Uh, a certain occupant who is not. An applicant here, and.
Okay.
And and I. And and we're fine with that. I also want to talk to the DBO S's to make sure that we get the correct entity that they're gonna be. Um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, what the, what that, and I think it's probably gonna be the DBO C corporation, but we'll make sure that we get that right, too.
Perfect. All right, given that, uh, I think we're ready for a uh, a motion to continue for two weeks, and uh. We'll look to uh. If you can have that in by Friday, the week before, Brian, as always, so we can all have a, take a look at that. And I'll talk, uh, and board members, I'll, I'll um, correspond with uh, Tom Mullen as well to make sure that um. We're covered, so.
Yep. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'll give you a, you know, draft motion and condition uh, that will, you know, before, so it can be contemplated.
Yep. Yep.
All right, so I, we're continuing this. We're still gonna talk about the other stuff, the OC and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's on the, that's a different thing on the other matters. This was an.
Oh, this is under other matters? Okay. So I move that we continue this case. Uh, for two weeks till our first hearing in June.
On June eleventh.
June eleventh.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Hearing and seeing no further discussion, regular voting members and Greg, Chip.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kasumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we'll see you in two weeks on that. All right. Next up. Well, on to other matters on the agenda. First up is eight ninety-four Main Street Dish Wireless. Request for minor modification to existing wireless facility. So someone here for the. Applicants.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dominica Tadashori, and I work for Crown Castle, which owns the tower.
Okay. Please proceed. If you've got a presentation, you should be able to share your screen.
Yes, so um, I'm just gonna give you a quick narrative first. It's really short. Um, the. Yes, so, um, I'm just gonna give you a quick narrative first. It's really short. Um, the application's on behalf of Dish Wireless. Dish is an existing carrier on the one hundred and thirty-three and a half foot telecommunications monopole located at eight ninety-four Main Street. Um, my company Crown Castle owns the tower and the property is privately owned. Um, telecommunications upgrades are common and are desired as technology changes to provide better to telecommunications services to residents, businesses, and first responders. Dish currently has three antennas at the seventy, uh, seventy-second, um, foot line on the monopole, so about halfway down. Uh, Dish proposes to replace all three existing antennas with just three new antennas at the exact same center line, so basically even swaps. Uh, the scope of work is considered routine maintenance in the industry. Um, there's no proposed change to either tower height or compound size. This application constitutes a by right eligible facilities request per the FCC's uh, section sixty-four oh nine regulations and does not constitute a substantial change of the tower. Um, application materials were submitted to you, including construction drawings and a passing structural analysis, uh, coming in at fifty-six point nine percent.
Okay.
Great. That's your presentation and we'll open up to board for comments and questions. Okay, it is pretty routine, um.
The one thing I don't see here, Mr. Chair, is our typical letter.
Yeah. Dominique, there's usually a letter included in this package.
I I did submit a letter. It was a cover sheet, um, that actually explained the FCC laws in addition to my proposal as well. And it was dated May first.
Yeah, I see that, but there's usually something, okay, hold on. There's usually something that the chair has to sign. I do not see that in here.
So I am unaware of what you are mentioning right now, Mr. Chairman?
Usually when these types of applications come in, if we approve it, the chair has to sign it for you.
We create the letter though, Mr. Chair, I think.
No, actually, the applicants usually give it to us.
Okay.
Because I usually chip it has the language you need for your motion.
I know. That's what I'm looking for in this letter, whether we've got it with all the.
Well, see if you can create a motion out of their letter that you see, so we can approve this and move on. And then, uh, you you are gonna need a letter signed by the town, so. Um, I I suggest you you contact the building department in the morning.
Okay, I mean, I was not made aware of any of this. I I was told it was just basically a presentation to the zoning board. Um, so I'm not really sure what kind of letter it is. I mean, my next step is to apply for a building permit.
They can give you a copy of, they'll send you a copy of the letter that that goes along with the building permit. That just says we, we, yeah.
Right, that that this is pretty pro forma, so. All right, I I just suggest you call the building department in the morning.
Okay.
Chip, do you think you can put something together?
I got it, but, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, allow Dish Wireless request to modify the existing wireless facility as presented this evening at eight ninety-four Main Street in Wakefield, owned by Crown Castle. Um, site number eight seven five oh four three with the crown site name Drinkwater.
And I think, Chip, we just wanna, I think we just wanna reference the, um, the smell from Dish Wireless Crown Castle.
Yep.
The construction document. You have that?
Yep.
Because that has the registered engineer stamp, his professional stamp on it.
Yeah, the plan that submitted by Eric V. English Civil uh, dated and revised oh four twenty-four twenty twenty-five as presented to the us this evening. Um, in regarding for the other replacement of the applicant's equipment as, and that we note that it is an eligible facility request for a minor modification under section six four oh nine and the rules of the FCC.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, uh, not hearing or seeing any further discussion, regular voting members and Greg Chip.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Kusumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Next up, other matters, one ninety-eight Albion Street, fence approval and CFO discussion.
Mr. Chair, Attorney Brian McGrill, I have that. If I could respectfully request that you take, um, sixty-two seventy-six Foundry Street first, because I think, uh, some folks, I know, uh, Ms. Rose is here for that, and I think some other people. And I I have one ninety-eight Albion, and nobody is here for that except for me.
Okay, board members are okay. We're gonna switch orders. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, hearing, seeing none under other matters, we'll take up first, uh, sixty-two and seventy-six Foundry Street. Discussion of certificate of occupancy.
Thank you, uh, again, uh, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrill for Wakefield Living LLC. We're back on uh, the Renly, uh, which you was originally sixty-two and seventy-six Foundry. Now the town has given it one number at sixty-two Foundry. Um, we're here to have a discussion on the certificate of occupancy, um, for the project. As I've mentioned, out of the fifty-eight units, um, again, you go DBI is with me, but approximately thirty-six are under agreement to sell. We're looking to commence closings within the next couple of weeks. So as you know, we need, um, some authorization from your board to the building department. Um, as far as allowing the issuances of certificates of occupancy. And what we're respectfully requesting at this point is that you would designate one board member to do a site visit and make a determination of compliance. We're not requesting a certificate of occupancy um, for, um, uh, all of the units, I think at this point for the, you know, authorizing for the common areas. Uh, the garage and forty of the residential units. We don't need one, obviously, for the commercial unit. But that will a- allow, uh, folks, uh, that are looking to close and get into the units to get in. And we can, we can start commencing sales. Um, if I could share my screen, I'd like to, uh, briefly go over the the conditions that are outstanding. Um, so the board can have an idea on that.
If you can just walk us through where you are on the affordability agreements.
Yeah, um, so there's, there's a few, um, it's just gonna be quicker, Mr. Chair. Can I just share my screen?
Yeah, you should be able to.
Yep. So these, these are the conditions. Um, I'm gonna tell you what would, you know, that one is gone. Uh, two, meaning it's been complied with its construction. Two is not an issue. Three is for a board member to determine that we're in compliance with all the landscaping. Landscaping is done. Uh, we're doing some final site changes, uh, to comply, but that that will be done by the time of a, uh, um, building permit. Uh, obviously markup panel and review of building permit plans are gone by, O and M plan is, goes, uh, forward. Um, we have to do an easement for the sidewalk. That's outstanding. That we'll, we'll work with Town Council on. Um, landscaping I mentioned will be done by the time, um, a board member who's designated comes out. Um, and, uh, let me see, that was, so the affordable, uh, the regulatory agreement has been approved by, um, the, um, the state. It's been approved by the town and signed by my client in the town. It's currently before the board for uh, signature. So we can't, we can't get an occupancy permit. The building department won't let us until the regulatory agreement is recorded. So we expect that any day. But that's kind of, you know, it's a condition of yours, but we're certainly gonna comply with that and not obtain a CO until that is done. Um, then, um, the, um, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar contribution. Um, you go, has that been done or is that still outstanding?
That's, uh, still outstanding.
Yeah, so we'll resolve that with the town, because that's before final CO that has, that has to be done. We have to do as-built plans, which should be done any day for the engineering department and building department. And then we have infrastructure in, in, uh, to complete. That main thing is the paving on Foundry Street in front of our project from Maple Street, which the whole street is gonna get repaved. Um, you go, you anticipate that happening within the next couple of weeks?
Yes, our, we have our permit, uh, application in with the town and the town engineer. Uh, it's being reviewed. Uh, we're trying to do it in conjunction with Grayson Lofts, uh, for their first, you know, for the frontage along that, their, uh, portion of Foundry. Uh, we go past our property. Actually, I think the condition is, um, uh, to the other Foundry Street, uh, condo project across the street. Uh, so we are trying to do it next week.
So you're gonna see drastic improvements on the surface on Foundry Street, uh, in the not-too-distant future, all the way from Albion past this project. Um, so, go ahead, you go.
Yeah, just specifically on the, uh, affordable units. Um, uh, the state has the signed regulatory agreement. They confirmed that last Friday. Um, they're working to get that to us so that we can record that document. And, uh, as of, uh, today, we have, uh, eight of the ten, um, affordable units under contract with the final two with, uh, purchasing sales to be signed by the end of this week.
So the lottery's already been held and we already have eight affordable buyers under agreement. So what we're, what we're requesting, Mr. Chair, would be, uh, respectfully, a, a vote by this board to authorize a letter to the, um, um, really what it would be, it would be to authorize forty residential COs in, um, the garage or any common areas. Um, and to designate one board member to coordinate with us, because obviously, um, you don't want, you know, there's gonna be punch list items, you know, but, uh, you know, I don't know if the, one of the board members could be designated to sign off on these punch list items like the landscaping and compliance would built according to plans and and et cetera, so we don't have to come back.
Okay.
I can, I mean, I can do it, Mr. Chair. I'm right down the street.
Can I, can Joe, either one of us?
Yeah, if, uh, one of you guys that's more familiar with plans and some of the rest of us would do that, that'd be good. Uh, I have no problem designating someone. Um, when do you anticipate final CFO?
I would say probably within the next month, right, you go?
Yeah, I mean, our, um, you know, our goal right now really is to complete the project to get our, our, um, um, patiently waiting homeowners into their, into these new homes. Um, but really, there's, there's very few outstanding items with respect to construction, uh, and or landscaping um, that Brian hasn't just mentioned, um.
So I think that. Where you, you go with all your sign-offs, electrical?
Plumbing. Yeah, we have all, sure, um, we have all sign-offs except, so we have sign-offs from the fire department, uh, for final. We have, uh, sign-offs for plumbing for final. Um, where, um, there was, um, a gas booster that was installed on Tuesday, uh, so that would give us the final affidavit from the engineer of record. Uh, electrical, we, um, uh, are having some slight issues with some compatibility issues between breakers and lights. Um, but that's being resolved as we speak, uh, with the fifth floor should be done by tomorrow, and then they're gonna work their way down. Um, so that's why we're a little bit longer, uh, trying to convey some of these units, but within the next two weeks. Um, the last outstanding sign-off would be electrical, and then it would be in front of the building department.
Okay. So these other things, like you, you obviously can, you know, make us feel better if you cut the check to the town ASAP. Um, and, uh, coordinate that paving, um, because right now, right, Foundry Street's in really rough shape. I'm sure your residents would like to have their moving vehicles coming in on a nicely paved road.
We, we would prefer to pave before, yeah, because we don't want to be trying to pave around moving schedules.
Right.
That would be our goal. So, um, my team, uh, like I said, uh, we got our first round of comments back from the engineering department, uh, for the paving today. Um, and I think we're trying to just, you know, figure out a time to meet on site to, to, to meet, um, the requirements from the engineering department.
Okay. Board members feeling okay about designating either Chip or Joe? My only problem with Joe is sometimes he's too nice, you know?
I don't know what that says about me, Joe.
Loaded comment there.
Maybe what we can even do, Joe, is try to coordinate it. You can take the lead, but if I'm around, I'll join you. But we'll designate you as the one.
Well, you're never around, so I guess I'm just. I guess I'll just take it, take care of it then. Yeah, you're right, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to the Chip offline.
All right.
Designate Joe as, as the lead.
Yeah. Right.
Brian, send me, send me whatever you got.
Yeah, and then, Mr. Chair, that we could get a vote to authorize the, the COs of, you know, forty COs at this point with the common areas and garage. Um, you know, but, but, and I will prepare that letter for you, Mr. Chair, because we're gonna have to come back before your full board. You know, Joe's gonna have to report back, and then we'll come back for the balance, but that allows, um, you know, a lot of the people to actually close on their units, Ms. Rose included, um, to get in. And then, you know, the board is certainly securing some of the punch list items with, with eighteen units in hand, if you will.
Right, right. I feel like, yeah, those eighteen units, um, gives us the leverage that we need. Not that I feel we need any, that is true, but.
There's a couple of things that need to be done, like the regular, before I would even draft that letter for you, the regulatory agreement's gotta get recorded.
Yeah, yeah, that was my big thing, yeah, too, which is why I asked upfront, so. Sounds like it's well on its way. But I agree, there's forty-something people looking to close and move on with their life, so. I'm on board with that. Um, any other comments, questions from the board? It's other matters, so it's not really open to the public. So I'm looking for a motion to, uh, designate Joe Pride as, uh, and to authorize the chair to sign a letter, uh, to the building department.
So I move that we authorize Joe Pride as our designee, uh, from the board to look over the project for compliance in regards to all the open items that are currently there, uh, and for the chair to, uh, write a letter to the building department, if applicable, uh, that he can, uh, if he so wishes, uh, provide COs for forty units. Do we need to list which forty?
No.
Okay.
No, yeah, no.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, in the common areas and garage.
And the common areas and garage, excuse me, yeah.
Okay, I'll second it, but I don't know if I can, because I'm.
You can.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll second, I'll second myself.
All right. Motion's been made, seconded. Any further comments, questions from the board? Hearing, none, regular voting members and Greg Chip.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kusumi?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. Looking forward to this being completed.
Thank you all.
When you're done, you go, uh, you know, we never see these buildings after we approve them all. Maybe we'll set up a time to walk over there.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can have all the board members and anyone else from the, from the, from the, uh, town that wants to come. Uh, we'd, we'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Moving on, we're on to section five of our agenda, clerk and board comments.
Well, Tom, one ninety-eight, we gotta go backwards.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot about that. Wishful thinking that we were getting that. Uh, going back to, uh, one ninety-eight Albion Street Fence and Certificate of Occupancy.
Thank you. So this is, um, one ninety-eight, um, Albion, which is the old laundromat. Um, and the building that, um, has been completed and, and, you know, I probably have gotten this is probably one of the most projects that I've gotten the most compliments on, that, you know, people, the general public, um, and I don't know if you've had a chance to go by and see it. But, um, this building has come out really nice. This is, this is, I took this picture today. And, you know, I think the board made the right call on this when you mandated the entire building be real brick, because it really looks sharp. Um, with, with the storefront and the mixed use. Um, with with the storefront and the mixed use, so. We're here on this also. This is um all rentals, so it'll be one CO. Um, and we're looking to get um one board member designated to work with us on uh to make sure the punch lists are all done, and then to uh report back to the chair and then authorize once reported back, because we're gonna look for just a final CO on this where there's no holdback. So the designate would report back to the chair that everything is done, and then the chair will be authorized uh to send the letter um that that COs can be issued. There's there's one there's one thing that needs to be decided uh by uh the board on this, and that is fencing. Um, you tabled this. Um, you have a condition that um originally, to refresh your memory, um, the landscape architect uh specked putting a fence on the back of the property. And during your approval process, your board said, well, we're not sure um what we think on this. Maybe we don't want a fence, or we'd like to contemplate it. So you put a condition instead of requiring it, that says um we needed to come back uh in essence for a determination on the fence, on whether it would be required and what what uh the style would be. So what I did today um is I took a couple of photos in the back area to give you an idea of what's going on back there. Um, we just bring those up. Let's see. So you're looking from our parking area out onto Lake Street. So this is the the pillar that you saw kind of as you looked at it on the picture I just showed. So if you go this direction, you're going towards Crystal Lake. And this is the back of the property. There's some parking spaces here. There's a neighbor here. This is our landscaping and, you know, all irrigated, complies with the landscape plan. So the fence that was contemplated will come up here. Um, and then another shot, as you kind of come, if if you on this screen take a right, I'm gonna show you what you're looking at. So, so I I'm taking a picture of my car. So this parking space ten, you would take, you would, as you come up from cr- um Lake Street, you walked along that landscaping, and then you take a left going further back on the lot in these spaces. Look at this building. And then there's more landscaping over here. So my client had to put a new retaining wall in here. It came nice, and it didn't affect the landscaping plan. There certainly is room to put a fence in here, even with the retaining wall, if you decide to do that. It's just a matter of, you know, whether you wanted to do it. So I had our our architect look at some possibilities. And um I'd like to share those on what what they thought.
Why you pulling that up, Ryan? Did your client have a a preference? Because I have written by this, because as I said, I go down Foundry. I mean, I don't go down Foundry, I go down Lake. You know, this property looks great, and the one right behind it that you showed with the driveway isn't so great.
Yeah, so his his preference is, you know, this is what the board struggled with, because I went back on my notes and the and and so this is the 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 fence that was required, or that was listed on the landscape plan, when the board said, hey, let's table this and not require it. We want it, we want you to come back after it's built, and then we'll make a decision. Um, is it it goes from, this is Lake Street in the back of the building, so the picture was taken from here. So the, and this is where those, the you go back, as I said, and this where that brick building is back here. So I just kind of, the orange line is just kind of highlighting, but the spec was contemplated that the fence would go all the way and then cut over and kind of around. So there's really two options, kind of. It would be like a white stockade fence to just kind of block that stuff out. Um, or, you know, just a metal fence, black metal fence that will be decorated. That wouldn't do much screening, or the third option is to just leave it alone. My client's like, you know, I I kind of, his preference would be to leave it alone. He he's just concerned with like a white fence. It's gonna make like a fort look. Um, and he figures that this is just the area, it all kind of blends in. Um, but, you know, that's why you you your board reserved uh jurisdiction, and and his comment to me is, you know, really whatever the board wants. Um, but if he had a vote, he would just say, leave it, leave it with nothing.
I don't think I'm in favor of leaving it with nothing.
Yeah, we understand that.
I say, I think you want to be divided by that house.
Yep.
I agree.
It, I I don't think the eight-foot white fence is the right idea either. But I think it needs something. What did you say, Joe?
I I agree with you, Chip. I don't I don't like the white fence at all. It's too too homo.
It's gonna make it too boxy, too boxy. It's gonna.
Yeah, I think the black will make the, you know, it matches the window trim. You could, it doesn't box it in. Like you said, you can see through it. And it, you know, I think it gives it a little bit more character, the black fence.
But it certainly creates a a lot line, which I think you're gonna need.
Are the shrubs or trees, do they get tall and dense to act like a fence or the privacy in the future?
So, good question, and I'm gonna.
No, there's not.
I don't think so.
We did not plant back there to create a buffer.
Oh, okay.
Chip, you want me to bring up the landscape plan so you can see what's back there? Would that be helpful or no?
Um, you can. I don't, I'm trying, you know, what's planted is what we discussed, but we didn't put like a row of aprabides or we we kept it low, because you're gonna have to plow to most of that.
Yep.
So it's it's gonna be, but I do think you need something.
So I'll just show you.
So i- in the uh, in the spirit of the 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 last
I think Joe's the perfect person for this.
But we should appoint someone.
I'll go, I'll go by there on my way to uh Foundry. It's right on the way.
It's not like it's gonna be out of your way.
We 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 should appoint someone to to go look at the CFO matter and to talk to the applicant and to Mr. McGrill about a choice of fence. I do think the applicant can have some say in here, but I I agree with what with the guidance that we heard. I I I think the white fence is a is a problem on uh numerous levels, because it is tight back there. You do want some separation, but there's gonna be snow on both sides of that fence, both from the homeowner's driveway behind Ian, snow from here. I think that's gonna wipe out uh a large structure like that, so. I I'm happy with Joe figuring it out with Brian and the applicant. Um, it's not such a huge detail that I think the board needs to spend a lot of time deliberating on, but you have the general sense that there needs to be some lot division there.
Yeah. Yeah, that's fine. And so, you know, so I respect that Joe will be appointed to work out with us to make a determination on the fence. We'll do what Joe decides. And then um uh to also make sure we're in compliance with all of our conditions, landscaping, and once he's satisfied, he can correspond with you, Mr. Chair, to then send a letter to the building department.
No, I I I stopped there the other day. That it looks done. Uh, so I'm sure it's all there. I'm sure this will, hopefully, Joe, this will be a quick one for you. It looks good. I agree. Looks good on that corner, too. Any uh, any word on a tenant in the retail space?
Yeah, I think he has. I think he said he has a barber shop. No, I don't have to go across town.
Another barber shop.
Barber shops, nail salons, let's go.
And he has salons.
All right, uh, everyone comfortable with that?
Sure.
All right, Chip.
I move that we approve, that we uh ask Joe Pride to be our liaison for this project and authorize him to let the chairman know whether the project is in compliance with all the ZBA requirements. And to determine what type and structure of fence there should be on this property.
Second.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, same voting members before Chip.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Persuomee?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right. But before that one opening, great to see they have a retail tenant, too.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
All right, we're now we're on the board and clerk comments. Anything out there for folks?
No, just to remind people about the signage, uh maybe we'll put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yeah, Dave wasn't gonna be here, so he asked us not to uh bring it up.
Yeah.
So Amy, if you can make a note, just to put the signage discussion on the June eleventh uh hearing, that'd be great.
Yep.
Amy, is there any chance you have the summer dates in front of you?
Um.
July and August meetings.
Yep, I have them in my calendar. Um.
You're good, because I don't have them in mind.
July sixteenth.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah.
And then also August thirteenth.
Okay, middle of the month. Those are what we usually do. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, without any further comments, then we're going to, uh, we have some minutes to approve. Can I get a motion on the minutes from the last meeting?
Want to give me the date of them?
Uh, let's say the twenty-eighth would've been the fourteenth.
I move that we approve. Thanks. I can't do the math at this time of night. I move that we approve April fourteenth minutes as written.
Seconded.
Okay, this is voice vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. With that, a motion to adjourn is always in order.
I move that we adjourn.
Do that by voice vote, too. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, folks.